Hello everyone, I'm Mark Cobrick and this is the Lakewood City Council Candidates Forum. The goal of the forum is to present the views of the candidates for Lakewood City Council in a fair, nonpartisan setting so that you, the voters, can make an informed decision. All candidates, whose names will appear on the ballot, have been invited to take part in this forum. The League of Women Voters of Jefferson County is sponsoring the forum in cooperation with Lakewood 8. The views expressed here will be those of the candidates, not the views of the Jefferson County League of Women Voters or of Lakewood 8. The Jeffco League of Women Voters has provided all of the questions for the candidates. The League takes no stand in support or opposition to the candidates. Our forum is divided into six sections, one forum for mayor and one for each of five city council ward races. Each forum is about a half an hour long. This is the election forum for City Council Ward 5 in the city of Lakewood. Before we meet the candidates, here is a map of the boundaries of Ward 5.
Ward 5 takes in the southernmost portions of Lakewood, roughly from Florida Avenue south to West Hampton Avenue, and from Kipling Parkway east to Wadsworth Boulevard. Parts of Ward 5 extend even farther south to West Grant Ranch Boulevard and reach as far west as C-470, covering Bear Creek Lake Park and the Homestead and Fox Hollow Golf courses.
There are two candidates for the Ward 5 seat, Dana Gutwine and Chad Gardner. You two will each have two minutes for an opening statement and one minute for closing statements. I'll ask as many questions as time permits in between, and each candidate will have the chance to respond to each question with a two-minute limit per response, and they will take turns answering first, as best I am able. And so Dana, we're going to begin again with you and your opening statement today.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity. Well, I'm Dana Gutwine, and I'm an engineer, your Ward 5 city councillor, and a Lakewood mom, and I'm running to ensure that everyone in Lakewood has the opportunity to succeed and earn a good life. My journey to running for office began in 2013 when I joined with my neighbors to start the Sustainable Neighborhoods program. Together we built a community garden, we started a leaf composting project, and many other projects. And this experience of working with my neighbors taught me that I'm not alone in wanting to serve our community, and also that together we can accomplish so much more than any of us can on our own. So it was that experience that really motivated me to step up and run for office. I ran, I won, together with the community, and I became the youngest woman on the city council, the only one with kids, and I'm really proud of everything we've been able to accomplish since. We made the largest open space purchase in a generation in Lakewood, which is really protecting our quality of life during this time of growth. We've expanded our police force every year since I've been on council without raising taxes, and we've invested in our infrastructure, our sidewalks, our bike lanes, and we became the largest city in the state of Colorado to address the youth vaping epidemic. So very proud of everything we've done. We still have a lot of work to do, and what you can count on me is that whatever challenges come our way, I'm going to make decisions for your family the same way I would for my own, because my whole family lives here. My parents are raising my kids here, sister and brother-in-law are raising their baby here, so we're all in this together, and I'm going to do everything I can to serve you and our community and maintain our quality of life.
All right, nicely said. Thank you Dana.
Thank you.
And Chad, your opening statement if you will.
Well, thank you. Before I begin with my introduction, I just want to remember the 18th anniversary of 9/11, and to thank all the first responders who are just American patriots walking down our streets every day, so thank you very much. My name is Chad Gardner, and I am running to become your next Ward 5 city council candidate. But basically, after talking with neighbors throughout our communities and throughout our many neighborhoods in Ward 5 and throughout Lakewood, I have heard many different concerns and many different opportunities where Lakewood can go. It's because of our neighborhoods that Lakewood is special. It is because of our people that we are unique. We should all come together and ask ourselves, how should Lakewood advance for the next 50 years, because it is our 50th anniversary as a city? With that question, I have heard responses from many different people throughout our neighborhoods, and many of them have been wonderful. Some people have said we need to start creating more open space. I agree with them. Families have said we need to start investing more in our parks. I completely agree with them, because I was raised on playing with Lakewood parks and playground equipment. There are issues that we face, but with every issue, there's an opportunity. Alexis de Tocqueville, in his great masterpiece Democracy in America, said, "Everyone knows the problem, but there are few that have the courage or energy enough to seek the cure." I believe, coming from my youthful experience, that I have the courage and the energy needed to maintain the vibrant community that Lakewood has developed over the past 50 years, and to guide it for the next 50 years. Lakewood is a unique city. We had great forefathers. The spirit is in our elderly folks, and the joy is in the children playing on our playgrounds. There is nothing better than to remember, we are all a part of a great city, one that can go forward and prosper. Thank you.
Nicely done, both of you. Thank you Chad. The first question goes to you. So now we know pretty much where your objectives are in terms of being council people, but I'm wondering, where's your heart in all of this? You know, being a Lakewood city council member, as I'm sure you know, is a large commitment. Sometimes it is a contentious and fractious commitment, so I'm wondering, you know, why would you decide to do this in the first place?
That is a great question. My grandma and grandpa first came to Lakewood in the early 1960s, before Lakewood even was an incorporated city. They raised my father here. My mother was also born here, and they taught me, through their lessons and through their life's work, that anything worth fighting for must be fought for. They said Lakewood is amazing because we have our family here, and it's through my family passion that I want to stand up and help Lakewood become better, more prosperous, and more safe for all of the citizens and for all of the neighborhoods throughout our great city. It's because of that that I'm going to be 100% devoted to protecting our families, to protecting our way of life, and to protecting our open space. You can count on that. I make a pledge to you, because my family has lived here, and I want to protect my family, but I want to protect your families as well.
Thank you Chad. Dana, you mentioned your mom. I'm wondering, is the council a heavy lift for a mom? Where's your heart in all of this?
Yeah, absolutely. You know what, that's a great question, and I think that anyone can, you know, talk the talk of wanting to step up and run for office, but the amount of work and time is quite a bit. We have council meetings, every Monday night we have ward meetings, there's HOA meetings, and I have for the last six years been attending all of those and our committee meetings, and really investing and prioritizing showing up for this community. The reason I do it is because the decisions that we make today impact my kids, all of our kids, the next generation, and I am fully invested in making sure that our voices, everyone's voices are represented at the city council, and, you know, at our ward meetings, at our town halls. There's so many amazing opportunities to get involved, and just really ensuring that it's a great place today and tomorrow for everyone in Lakewood. So, thank you.
Okay, well said, both of you. Dana, this, our questions, as you know, are from the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County, and they want to know what you see as a current challenge for your ward specifically, and what action you would propose to overcome it or change it.
Great, thank you. Well, as I'm knocking doors and talking to people in our ward, the top three things that I hear from our community, number one is kind of a frustration with growth in general. The second thing is, I think, kind of related, which is just really wanting to ensure that what they love about Lakewood in the first place, which is our parks and open spaces are preserved and protected. And number three is about feeling safe at home, and that's our public safety. So they are all kind of related, and I think that what I'm hearing from the community is, number one, you know, to address growth, we will be implementing the growth cap that was passed by the voters, and people just want to make sure that growth that's in Ward 5 is the right size and in the right place. So I keep, you know, I'm hearing that time and again, and I'm really taking that to heart as we make decisions about each development that comes forward. The reality is, we don't have a lot of growth areas in Ward 5, it's more north, but that's really important. And then parks and open space, I helped us make the largest purchase, it's actually in Ward 3, but it's the Taylor property, which is just across the street from Ward 5, and that is really important to our community, because they want to make sure that that's not going to turn into a bunch of homes and apartments, and proud to say that will be preserved forever. And then in terms of safety, we've added agents every year that I've been on the council, and so I think just really making sure that everyone in Ward 5 feels safe and has the opportunities to succeed is my biggest priority.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chad, same question for you. Biggest challenge and your approach to a solution?
Absolutely. As I have been walking and talking with our neighborhoods throughout our ward and throughout our communities, I have heard from you that there are many ideas and many different positions on what actually matters. The number one thing that I have heard is the increasing crime rate throughout our ward and throughout our neighborhoods. I've talked to many different people, and they all have different experiences with crime in different ways, some as mail theft, some as burglaries. I've talked with them about solutions that we can implement with increased neighborhood watch, with increased patrols, and they all seem to say, "We must do something now, because it is out of hand." I agree with them, and as your next city councillor, I will fight tooth and nail to protect your livelihood, to protect your property, and to protect your way of life. Because Lakewood is a great city, but we want to make it a great city to live in. We need to reduce the crime rate, and that is what I am going to do for you, because I have heard that from your own mouths. The next issue is growth and traffic congestion. Now, with our roads that we have right now, there's not much that we can do about traffic congestion, but with growth, we must implement the strategic plan that was passed by the people across all the wards. If we implement that, because the people did speak for that, we will be able to see the people's voices in action and see the solution that the people voted for take place. That has a high likelihood and probability of actually solving the problems that are facing us right now. So to sum it all up, the two issues that I have heard from many people around our community is crime and vandalism and the increase in growth. Now, if we work together and come together as a community, there is no challenge too big that we cannot solve, and I will have the courage and the stamina to fight for you and to fight for our city.
All right, nicely done, both of you, and since you've both mentioned growth, let's talk about growth. I think everyone in Lakewood is talking about growth right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
With the passing of Lakewood Question 200, the city council will be determining the number of allocations available for issuance for each year, based on 1% of the number of estimated dwelling units as of December 31st of the previous year as the equal point. This is the ordinance, of course, while allowing for any additions of new dwellings, annexations, and exempted projects, and subtractions for any destroyed or abandoned dwellings and expired permits. So this is the issue that, well, took some by surprise. A lot of people in Lakewood apparently were lockstep on it from the very beginning, as we know the outcome. So my question, and Chad, this goes to you first of all, is how do you see this change affecting the growth ordinance? How do you see it affecting your ward?
Affecting my ward? Well, there's not many areas that are going to be developed in Ward 5, but there are some that are currently being proposed for development or currently are being developed, as the case with Chanel Family Farm. But with Proposition 200, just hearing from your voices, I have heard that it is going to safeguard our parklands, that it's going to decrease the traffic congestion, and I think it's going to have a very positive and beneficial impact on Ward 5 entirely, because it comes down to the point of fact, that we are, that we as a city are going to be implementing what you voted for and what you passed as an ordinance. If you voted for it, it is correct. It is what we shall do, and it is what we should do, because no one knows the community better than the community members and our neighbors. With that said, I believe that Proposition 200, even though it is not perfect in every aspect, it is going to have much better consequences for Lakewood than if we do nothing. So overall, it's going to have a net benefit.
Net benefit, all right. And Dana, your position on the growth ordinance and how it impacts the ward?
Great, thank you, yes. So a number of things. First of all, just want to address really quickly, I think it's a common misconception that the growth cap will actually help preserve our parks and open space. All of our parks and open space, we actually purchase as a city, so if you see land that is undeveloped, it's different from parks and open space, so we have to purchase that and do so. So Question 200 won't actually help us make any new purchases, we did do that in other ways, so just wanted to address that really quickly, and I, so basically, I think that, you know, Question 200 is really interesting in our ward. It actually did fail in Ward 5, but passed citywide, which means that we are absolutely going to be implementing this. And as I mentioned before, we don't have a lot of growth areas in Ward 5, but we are nonetheless impacted by every development that comes into our city. We all drive the same streets, we all go to the same businesses, and so I think that the best thing, the greatest thing that is going to come from implementing this is that it gives the community a greater voice in every development that comes in, over 40 units. So before, if you were building within your property rights, a developer could just build within the rights. Now, if it's above 40 units, we will have an additional public process, additional opportunity for input, and I think that overall, that's going to allow us to create a better quality product, and really make sure that people have a say in every development, what they want to see and whether it's the right time or not. One quick example is that during the rezone of the Chanel farm, we heard from the community that this was not a good fit, and that it was a historic property, and we ended up voting against doing that rezone, and I was proud to do so.
I have another question about growth from the League, and this is, concerns the challenges for your ward, if any. If you anticipate any challenges, as the Lakewood 2025 Moving Forward Comprehensive Plan approaches its completion dates during your term, so the question is, what challenges do you see for your ward in anticipation of the 2025 Moving Forward Plan?
Great. Well, you know, it's all, we all care about the same things. It's still about the growth and planning for transportation, planning for parks and additional opportunities. I'm really excited that we have the chance to begin this process again. It's a great opportunity for our community to come together and talk about our vision for the future, and I think that what we're seeing and what I'm hearing is, you know, we do have some changes that we want to make to this plan. I think it's a great time for us to really look at, okay, I've heard from people that they're frustrated about growth, but most of them don't want to see no growth. They just want to make sure that it's in the right places and in the right sizes, and that it really fits with our vision for our community. So I think this is a great time to really look at what we want to accomplish and communicate that, so that we can have a common goal and build the best community that we can.
Same question for you, Chad, in regards to the plan, how do you see it, well, it's already implemented, how do you see it impacting your ward specifically as we go forward?
So basically, even though everyone has different perspectives and different opinions on the growth initiative that passed in November, we all know, and we all share different desires for how to handle growth. And I believe that the best way to do it is strategically, which is why we have the Strategic Growth Initiative. We are all concerned as neighbors and residents of our great city about our parks, about traffic congestion, about bicycling, about sidewalks. There are many different issues that we have to face, but we can all face them if we come together. With 2025 just right around the corner, we have a monumental task ahead of ourselves as a council and as a city, and that is determining, how are we going to live for the next 20 to 30 years? How's our way of life going to be? How are the next generation of Lakewoodians going to live? Those are the questions that we need to start asking today, and I believe Proposition 200 answered many of those questions, by giving our city government and by giving our community a voice and a path forward. I consider Proposition 200 a roadmap. We start out at one point, and it will take us on a journey. Sometimes the journey will go in bad directions, but most of the time, it will be a net positive. We will go places that we never thought possible, and because of Proposition 200, Lakewood is going to be able to safeguard the same values that our founders had created back in the 60s, that is, limited government, personal rights, and our open space. With that, if we look to it, it's all going to come together and be a net benefit once again. Proposition 200, even though it has many opponents and many supporters, is the path forward for Lakewood, because you, the people, voted for it, and as your councillor, I will implement it without hesitation, because you spoke and I will listen. Thank you.
Thank you Chad. And let me ask you now, another question from the League is, in spite of or despite the growth issues and the many contentious feelings and strong feelings on both sides about it, what makes Lakewood the great place to live that it is? What makes your city the special place that it is?
Oh, this is the, this is what I talk about while I'm talking with you, and I hope to talk with you very soon, but my grandma and grandpa moved here, as I have previously stated, back in the early 1960s. They came here because of our space and our way of life. They raised their family because of the way of life, and my mom and dad decided to have children in Lakewood and raise them here, because we are a great city, because we care for our families, we care for everyone as neighbors, and most of all, we come together as a community to find solutions. Lakewood has been declared an all-American city some years ago, but I believe it is always going to be an all-American city, because we respect everyone and we respect everyone's voice. I understand some people do not get along, but overall, we are all neighbors, and we all understand the value and importance of creating and safeguarding a great city to raise our families, to raise our children, and to grow old and retire in. Lakewood doesn't just serve one demographic, it serves everyone equally with greatness and with quality of life. To sum it up, Lakewood is great, because we have made it that way. It's our choice to keep Lakewood great, and I believe we will always make that choice as a community, if we come together with one cause and with one purpose.
Dana, same question for you. What makes this such a great place to live in?
Great, well, thank you. I really believe Lakewood has just an unparalleled quality of life. What I hear a lot is, it's about our location. We're close to Denver, which means we have a lot of job opportunities. We're close to the mountains, and people can go skiing if they're willing to brave the traffic at this point. And, you know, we have amazing parks and open spaces. Lakewood is actually 25% parks and open space, which is among the highest in the country, so I'm really proud of that. I think the other thing that's really unique about Lakewood is we're one of the more affordable cities in the region, and as cost of living continues to skyrocket, you know, the secret's out, Lakewood's a great place to live, Colorado's a great place to live, but Lakewood has still been one of the most affordable cities in the metro area, and that's something that we, I believe, really need to protect as we continue to implement the growth cap, just make sure that the people who live here can afford to still live here. And I think that, you know, I mentioned the opportunity, we also have some of the best schools in the country, Jefferson County Public Schools, both of my kids go there, the jobs, but we also have a lot of great amenities if you want to retire here in Lakewood too. So we really serve all ages, it's a great quality of life here, and I think that most of all, it's our people that make it this great city. We have a very engaged community, we have people that donate their time to our police department, sustainability, our heritage center, so it's a very active and, I think, unique community. In fact, we're up for an award on engaging communities, that's, we're competing worldwide, we're one of the finalists, and we're up against cities like Paris. So I think that, you know, that just says a lot right there, we're just a very special place with great people and a great location.
Well, I hope, I hope you win, and when you do, I hope you call me first, so that I can, I can do the story. Next question, the question to you now Dana, is as we celebrate the 50th anniversary of the city of Lakewood, what is your vision for Lakewood, and more specifically, for your ward?
Great, thank you. That's a great question, and I think it's really exciting that we are celebrating our 50th anniversary here. I think that as we move forward, we just need to ensure that everyone, all ages, have the opportunities to succeed here. That's going to look like very carefully and leaning into this growth conversation, and ensuring that, you know, any growth that comes into our city is the right size, is the right place, that it fits, that it doesn't hurt our quality of life, but also that we don't negatively impact the affordability. So I think that's going to be a huge part of the challenge moving forward, and in fact, growth has always been a big topic of conversation in Lakewood. Continuing to preserve and protect our parks and open spaces, that's what people care about, and we will continue to do so, and then of course, public safety. Public safety challenges change over time. For example, we're dealing with new challenges at safety in schools, and I think we just need to continue to partner, innovate, look forward, use the best practices, so that we can ensure everyone in Lakewood has those opportunities.
Chad, your vision for Lakewood for the future?
Absolutely. With the 50th anniversary, some people equate that with the golden years, and some people equate the golden years with the twilight years of any city or person, but I would like to say Lakewood has always had golden years, and we are not coming close to our twilight years, because we will always be a great city if we come together and actually tackle the situations that we are facing. Lakewood is more than just a place on a map, it's our home, where we raise our family, where we raise our kids, where we grow old, where we retire, and where we work. It's more than anything else that I can describe. It's perfect. Now, for the next 50 years with Lakewood, as I like to talk about, we are going to be seeing drastic change. If we look forward to the next five years, there are some things that we cannot determine what will happen. New technology will bring new innovations, and those new innovations will impact our livelihoods, and will impact the way that we actually think about how we live. But with that, in the current, present, future, I believe that we are going to need to focus on our public safety, increasing and expanding our open space, and making it a great place to live in. Now, with public safety, I applaud the police officers, working at a bank, they are always there and they are always supportive, coming in and doing transactions. I always like to tell them personally how much I appreciate them and that I support them. One proposition that many neighbors across the community have raised to me is that, instead of letting the police officers do all the work, which they have done a great job at, we should come together as a community and help them by creating neighborhood watches that not only report crime, but also deter crime, because there's nothing better than stopping the action at the very beginning. But with that, that is going to be a number one priority for us, because we all want to be safe and secure with our homes and our property, but we also want to safeguard and secure the future for ourselves and for our children and the next generation to come, if they are born here or move here from across the country. So with that being said, we have another great 50 years ahead of us, and they are all going to be golden years.
All right, thank you very much. Time now for your closing statements. Each of you will have one minute to sum up the day, and Chad, you have the opportunity to speak first.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County for giving both of us this opportunity to come here and just explain our thoughts and to introduce ourselves to you when we're not on your doorstep. But anyways, I'd like to say that my qualifications for public office is that I am a Lakewood resident that cares deeply and passionately about the health and well-being of us all as a community and as our neighbors. I want to bridge the differences that do not unite us. If we come together, there is nothing that we cannot solve. With that being said, we should focus on safeguarding our public safety skills and building on those with the creation of neighborhood watch programs and with the strengthening of existing ones. Likewise, I also believe that we need to invest and improve our playgrounds that our children play on. I played on those playgrounds 20 years ago, and some of those are still in place today. It's time that we innovate and bring those forward, because our children deserve the best, because we are the best city in the state of Colorado. Thank you very much, and I will be seeing you soon.
All right Chad, thank you. Dana, your closing statement.
Thank you. Yes, I also really appreciate this opportunity to speak to our voters, so thank you. And at the end of the day, you know, Lakewood is my home, it's where I'm raising my kids, but it's all of your home too, and I think that, you know, this is the place that we've all chosen to build our life and get our slice of that American dream. And I think people here really want to make sure that they feel safe at home, that they have the opportunities to get a good job, a good-paying job, to send their kids to great great schools, to retire and save for retirement. And I think that they want to have the opportunity to enjoy what makes Lakewood so special, our parks and open spaces and this Colorado way of life. So I really see my job as preserving and protecting that and fostering opportunities to ensure everyone in Lakewood is able to go after that American dream. We are an all-American city. And I think, you know, I'll just continue to work hard with you, for you, and make decisions for your family the same way I would for mine. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sure coming to a doorstep near you somewhere in Lakewood soon, Dana and/or Chad.
Absolutely.
Thanks to both of you for your time today.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thanks, Dana and Chad. They are the Dana Gutwin and Chad Gardner. They are the Ward five candidates. Election Day is November the 5th. All active voters will be mailed a ballot between October 14th and October 18th. For your convenience, there will be an outside ballot drop-off box on the west side of the Civic Center located at 480 South Allison Parkway. If you choose to mail your ballot, be sure that it is mailed early enough to ensure that it arrives by the deadline on Tuesday, November 5th. For more drop-off box locations, as well as the nearest polling centers, go online to For candidate and ballot information, please consider using vote411.org, the online voter's guide, which will be available starting on October 8th, 2019. This guide provides a side-by-side comparison of the candidates for all of the Colorado races. Thank you for watching.